On May 22, 2019, Union Law Branches and Council on Park Order. Would you like to?
Mr. Dangart?
Here.
Mr. Viera will be absent. Dr. Vogt?
Here.
Dr. Sally?
Here.
Mrs. Wettis?
Here.
Can I hereby certify that this meeting has been published in the newspapers in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act and posted as required by law?
Thank you. At this time, we would like to ask Mr. David Dell from A R H. Is he here? Please come forward.
How's everybody doing this evening? So, I'm here this evening to talk about Jerry Morgan Park. As most of you should be aware, we passed the resolution, actually R 5419, in March of this year, authorizing applications to go in for funding for the Green Acres program. That application did go in. There's a couple of things that we need to do to clean up the application. One of the requirements is a public hearing. We did have a public hearing, but it was not done with this board, and that's one of the requirements of the Green Acres program. So, we're here tonight to talk about what improvements were included in the application. It included synthetic turf soccer field that would replace a portion of the existing softball. And it included removal of the handball courts and construction of -- on this plan, I have two basketball courts. If we can fit in, design a third, we will. And then, that would also require relocation of the paved path and adjustment to the retaining wall. So, those are the proposed improvements that went in with the application. And this is an opportunity for this board and for public, if anyone is here that wants to provide a comment.
So, we have to open it to public comment?
Yes.
Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to ask some questions regarding Jerry Morgan Park?
If I may ask, Jack Curd, are there dates associated with any of this, the cognitive completion of the works, or anything like that?
No, this is -- well, this is an application for funding, right? So, once we get the funding, then we would go through the process.
Okay, so it's a little too early to answer that question. Thank you.
Yes. You mentioned two basketball courts? Yes. You're going to put two more? Yes. It would be where the tennis court and handball court will be replaced with basketball courts. Okay, what -- I'm sorry. Is there a need for two more? I'm under the impression that there is. I would ask maybe two.
Do you have any insight into? Well, we have tournaments and so forth planned.
Okay.
And also, that area of the court presently is underutilized. In fact, it's not utilized at all.
The tennis courts?
The handball court. Go back there, they hide behind the wall, and I won't even try to imagine what they do there.
I got you. Thank you.
That's all coming down, the handball?
Yes.
Okay. I think you mentioned that last time about that was a problem area. It should be able to come down.
Yeah, just curious, why is it angled that way?
It was angled that way as a concept to see what we could fit, and it probably will not be angled that way in the final design.
Well, will it be anchored more straight up?
They would -- yeah, if we can straighten those up, we'll straighten those up.
And what's the total cost?
The application went in at $1.3 million.
Just in terms of like the money that we get, or that we could possibly get from Green Acres, what percentage are we at? I mean, how does that fit into the grand scheme of things?
Good question. I don't have any answer to. I don't know the --
It's a 50/50.
It's a 50/50. My question.
It's 50/50 what? That this would use a half?
With the doubt that Green Acres will pay 50% of the cost of the project.
Okay, and then we pay 50%.
Yes.
Okay. But we could, if we wanted to, we could put in more applications also. Is there a limit on the amount that we could put in?
50%.
No, no, no. I'm talking about if we wanted to do, and I assume the deadlines are past and everything, but --
Yes.
Okay.
But to answer your question, yes, we could put in more applications for other projects.
Okay, okay. That's what I was getting at. Okay, good. Thank you.
Yeah, I understand there's maybe some remediation at the gas company?
Yes, New Jersey Natural Gas has an open project, in my understanding of agreement and coordination that's been going on with the city. They will be -- this is part of the reason it's tough to give a timeline. One, we have to receive the funds. Two, there's some remedial work that has to happen. New Jersey Natural Gas is currently putting their plans together to finish the last piece of remediation that I believe they need to do here. And in a quick summary from what I've seen on that, they're going to be building some slurry walls and putting a cap below the surface. And when they do that, we're going to have to coordinate this design with them. For example, if you wanted to put lights up, we can't go through that cap. So, we'd have to build -- most of the stuff we'd have to do is we'd have to build it up and not go through their layer. And so, there are some of the challenges that will happen in design at this point, where it's concept and where we're doing our work, planning to do our work after they have done theirs.
Oh, so they have to?
Yes.
Is there any picnic areas in the park or like barbecue pits or places that families can go and have like a little outing?
There's a gazebo in the center part of the park.
But there's no like picnic area or anything like that?
No barbecue pits, so they kind of don't.
Is there, do you think that people would utilize it if we had something like that?
The only area would probably be the area of the gazebo, otherwise there are fields, basketball courts, and then the other space, we're proposing to put another basketball court. And then, at the further part, the Long Branch Avenue side, that's Memorial Park. So, there's really very little space for that.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
I just want, since you're here today, maybe, you know, Jake, you know, I quoted you the other day about Jerry Morgan Park. So, the intent is at one point in 2020, if I'm not mistaken, to close that off? Is that part of this remediation here?
Part of the remediation, yes.
So, are they going to dig that whole concrete area up?
They're going to demolish some of the site in order to do that work, yes.
And then, they will pay for redoing it?
They're going to have to restore something, and there's got to be a discussion and agreement as to what they need to save. So, there's a little bit of a gray area there, and are they putting back what's there? Are they putting back something along the lines of what we're proposing?
No, I mean, change that.
Monument?
No, no, not the monument.
I'm sorry?
Not the monument. We're not in the monument area.
Oh, yeah, well, that's what I'm asking.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, we're not in that monument area. We're outside of that area.
Oh, you're outside of that with all the remediation testing?
That is my understanding.
Yes. But they are closing that off.
It will be closed off in 2020 or whatever years. We won't be able to have the service, for example.
Yeah, so why are they closing up if they're not, if it's not --
It's going to be fenced. It's going to be fenced.
They're going to have a fence up, and I did ask that at the last meeting, if they could move that fence back for the ceremony, and it didn't seem to be something that was understood, or I kind of had that same question that you have. It seems to me if you wanted to have the ceremony, you could move the fence back and be able to walk into that portion of the site. But it's, the plan they drew up had it closed at the street.
We did, after speaking to the gas company as a chair, to move the ceremony just for that year up closer to where the basketball courts are now, and they would purchase some type of plaque to put up, you know, in that area to still honor Jerry Morgan, and open it's open back up, obviously, even at that. So, there is a spot that's closer to the monument that we could go to, but then, you know, people handicap, they want to come. It's a long walk from Liberty Street all the way down, so that's why it's only have to be.
What I'm saying, Bill, if it's outside the monument area, why is it being closed to law? Or is it the testing?
They're trying to restrict people from coming into the park, into the area.
In that area. I would say to whatever odds.
That's the why. They're just trying to stop people from entertaining going in.
So, they are going to put everything back the way it was?
Yes, as far as the monument.
No, I mean, everything, like the glass or whatever was there.
So, that's something that --
Years ago, before the monument area was built, we used to have the service in the parking lot on the west side of that park. So, there's plenty of space. You can actually, that was a small monument there, as you went to the park from Liberty Street, because it's where the ceremony used to take place. Then, we built it on the Liberty Streets, I'm sorry, the Long Branch Avenue side, and it takes place there now. But you can easily have the memorial service on the western side again, if there's plenty of space from park and will work going on the Long Branch Avenue side.
But I think both the mayor and the council president referred to the fact that are these upgrades going to be disturbed and possibly not replaced to the same level?
That, no, what's going to happen is going to happen before the upgrades.
Well, but you seem uncertain about --
The remedial work will happen before we do the upgrades. The question that I would ask, and perhaps this is something the administrator and the solicitor can work on with me, is what the agreement says for New Jersey Natural Gas to restore the site. So, now, you've just heard that it's a 50/50 Green Acres. Well, that 50% may be able to come from whatever the restoration would have been on the New Jersey Natural Gas. I don't know what's --
It's a matter of negotiation.
Okay.
Okay, which means that it's kind of open, a matter of negotiation that --
Well, I would assume that they are going, that if they're going to disturb, they are going to have to pay for the restoration. So, it's not unusual for there to be a remediation and done at the same time we eventually do an upgrade. It's just a question of what if, you know, typically, my experience has been is that if they, if they have a million dollar cost to restore, and you said, oh, look, we don't want you to restore, we want you to just give us the million dollars, they're happy to do that because frankly, they capture their responsibility. So, and I'm not saying that that's how this will end up, but that's typically the way those negotiations go. George, is that your experience? Give your opinion.
So, once they finish their remediation, then would we be able to approach them if that using that area as a parking lot, could be blacktop and used?
Although, I think there's one of the different areas.
No, but I'm talking about now, New Jersey Natural Gas.
So, certainly, and we can get into this discussion, George, can happen with them, is, you know, one of the ways to remediate is to cap it, is to put basketball up.
Yeah, it is a mechanism that you can use.
Yeah, so that might be, the answer is that might be part of it.
Okay, so then, if they do that, maybe we can think about putting some picnic areas in the park, too. Because it would be a great way to make that park, you know, become very active for families.
Looking at the configuration right now, there's some open area that is not accounted for that potentially we looked at when we get into the design.
Okay. So, will that come back to this table then again, when we start talking about the design possibilities for it, or how will that part happen?
Step one, we need to get the grant. Step two, that's the, that can work actually however you like. I can sit down and we can talk about what it is you want to do. It has to be, it has to match what you've just put in for. So, the, we're asking soccer field right now. If you come to me and say, no, we don't want to do a soccer field, that changes, that changes your commitment to the grant. So, but yes, when the design point comes, absolutely.
Okay.
But Anita, I think we're talking about two different things, right? One is, one is the grant for the soccer field, basketball courts, et cetera. The other is Rosa's suggestion about a parking lot, the remediation that needs to take place in the negotiation of that.
Right, right.
Right, Dave? So, it's two separate issues.
Yeah.
You're just here, so that's why I asked you about it.
Understood. And for the record, we are here to talk about the park site and the fields and the applications going in. So, all that other stuff is good, but it's actually outside of the limits of this project and job.
Right, right, right.
Mr. Jones, did you?
Yes, we, standardly, councilman, just for your information, we have regular meetings with the engineers as they go forward with their conceptual plans and then eventually their site plans. There are regular meetings that we hold, and then we're giving updates. At that time, during those sessions, we can change the plans or include something else as we go along.
Perfect, great.
And even though in construction, we have regular meetings as we proceed.
Yeah, good. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next, I'd like to ask Sandrine Zastik, please come forward, and Michael Litter.
Hi, I'd like to introduce my supervisor, Michael Litter. He's the Director of Prevention and Recovery, and it's probably best to speak on these grants and the answer to your questions about the funding. Why don't you take the mic?
Okay. Thank you for having us. So, I guess, should I give an overview of the grants? I guess that's the best way to start. So, first, we are part of RWJ Barnabas Health, so we're the Institute for Prevention and Recovery, and our work focuses on the prevention and recovery of substance use disorder. We have received multiple grants. One of them in particular is from the state of New Jersey to do the Communities That Care program. It's been a great opportunity to partner specifically with the city of Long Branch to look at risk and protective factors for the youth of Long Branch, to see what we can do to not only prevent substance use disorder, but other things such as delinquency, teen pregnancy, many different risky behaviors amongst youth. This has given us the opportunity to partner in many different ways. So, I think to talk specifically about that and then also the recovery side. So, in that process of getting the Communities That Care grant, we were fortunate enough to get connected with the Hears Coalition that has been started by the mayor and councilwoman and many others to focus on the recovery side of substance use disorder within the community. So, we're very excited to have Communities That Care, which is going to focus much on the prevention of substance use disorder, and then for those who are afflicted with the disease of addiction and need the support for recovery, we also can help support on that side. So, what we have recently done is submitted a few grant applications, two of them specifically to the county of Monmouth. One is to provide recovery supports, so activities that help an individual who have gone through treatment, who have entered into recovery from substance use disorder, help support them through that process. We know recovery is very much a peer-driven model, that someone who has experienced substance use disorder and has recovered themselves is in one of the best positions to help support someone maintain and extend that recovery into long term. So, we've applied to the county of Monmouth for, it's a relatively small grant to do recovery supports. But when we looked at that, we looked to see what other opportunities were there for us to be able to braid funding, to really do as much of a, to take as much of a comprehensive approach as we could. So, in addition, we applied to the county of Monmouth for case management grant. That's a slightly larger grant. If awarded, we will be able to hire two case managers. The way we look at recovery is not just abstinence, it's looking at the whole person. We know that someone in recovery not only needs to be abstinence from substance, but also need housing, transportation, build a relationship with their families, all, that whole person is really where you find the most successful long-term recovery. So, a case manager will meet with an individual one-on-one, figure out what they need. Maybe housing is their issue, maybe unemployment, maybe they have family dynamic issues, whatever it is, and we will come up with what we call RAP Plan, which is a Wellness and Recovery Action Plan. So, it helps them identify, you know, housing is my issue, and here are steps to connect to social services or whatever is available. So, those are the two grants that we applied for from the county. We are also working with the Monmouth Medical Foundation to try to utilize some donations that they have received from a private source to help open a recovery center. So, the idea would be is working in conjunction with the Hears Coalition, the mayor and council, identify a physical location within Long Branch where we could provide these recovery supports and case management services. We know that stigma is the number one barrier to someone who is suffering from substance use disorder. Our dream is that that barrier of stigma goes away. We know addiction is a chronic disease, and someone should be able to walk into a doctor's office or wherever else and deal with it, same as diabetes or high blood pressure, cholesterol, whatever it is. So, we know that's not the case. We know that not everyone is equipped to deal with the disease of addiction like they are with diabetes or whatever it is. So, our dream is a stigma-free recovery community center where someone walks in with very little hesitancy, very little stigma, just like a YMCA, someone will walk into a YMCA or Boys and Girls Club. And there, that's where they would be able to access the recovery supports from a peer recovery specialist, a case manager, and various other things. We also, lastly, are submitting an application to the Impact 100 folks, because they are able to offer to successful applicants one-time funding. So, we're hoping to utilize that funding to help build out the center, to fill it with the different things that we would need to make that center successful. So, that application is due at the end of the month, so that'll be in our two. Monmouth County grants have already been submitted. We're just waiting to hear back. The Impact 100 is due at the end of the month or early June, and we're meeting with the Monmouth Medical Foundation and some of their private donors currently, and it's an ongoing process, to, they've already said that they want to focus their efforts on substance use disorder, in particular, you know, overdose and opiate epidemic. We just need to tell them the specific plan that we're looking at to get their body in. But we're hopeful that instead of just little dribs and drabs or little small pieces, that collectively, when we put all these pieces together, we'll really be able to offer something that's very comprehensive. We currently have state grants to serve our hospitals, so we serve all of our emergency departments throughout the RWJ Barnabas system, as well as many of the Hackensack Grady Hospitals, Central State, Trinitas, with the opioid overdose recovery program. So, anyone with substance use disorder that comes into our EBS or inpatient floors, we connect them with a recovery specialist and a patient navigator to help them enter into recovery. So, we help start their journey into recovery. Our hope is that now with a recovery center, that we'll be able to help them continue that journey. We also will, you know, strongly partner with many different community agencies. Preferred, for example, has a grant specific for Monmouth County. It's called a STAR Grant, which is Support Teams for Addiction Recovery. So, they'll be able to partner up with us in collaborating, offer some services, and really anyone else, because, you know, we can't do it alone. There's a tremendous need. So, it's not only us braiding funding that we'll apply for, but also collaborating with the community. I hope.
I have a couple of questions.
Yeah.
Will it be beds there or just a walking type of?
Wouldn't be beds, so wouldn't be residential in any way. The idea is, I mean, the best way to say is it's a community center, almost like a YMCA, specific for those with substance use disorder. We have a recovery specialist of ours that entered into recovery about 12 years ago, and he tells the story that when he got out of treatment, he was told to go see this father Jim. And he shows up, and it's just an empty hall with a pool table and a circle of chairs. And the guy told him, if you come back every day, you will be in recovery. If you don't come back, you're going to struggle. And at first, he didn't understand, but he realized that coming back every day, he found that fellowship, that peer recovery supports, and just the pool table was a draw enough to play pool, which then led him to the circle of chairs, which was his path was an AA meeting. And he attended an AA meeting, again, finding that peer recovery supports with other individuals who have, you know, lived it, been there, done that. And now, he's actually 14 years in recovery.
What about job placement, job training? Where is that from?
So, again, that's another opportunity, and really, it'll require us to partner with other agencies. We don't want to reinvent the wheel. There's many agencies throughout the county, you know, even within the city, that do job readiness training, job placement. So, our goal would be to bring all those services in and partner with whoever's offering it. Now, we may, through our case managers, recovery supports, we may be able to do simple things like resume building or soft skills training, some, you know, things that don't really require extensive funding, we can do that. But if it's maybe a job fair, technical training, access to vocational skills, we would partner with any of the agencies. That's, that's part of the specialty that are currently our patient navigators do, but also the case managers. Their, half their job is to work with the individuals, the other half is they become an absolute expert of what services are available and how to access them. They know the tricks to get in, when a program's available, so that'll be part of that building process. And that's also the advantage of partnering with Hears and the Communities That Care. We just had our key leader orientation that was tremendous. It was extremely well-attended and really had a diverse offering of different services and agencies that serve the area. So, it's going to be tapping into those resources to do that as well.
What are the ages that you're going to target as far as part services for?
So, we will serve anyone. Our prevention services will almost always focus on youth. The idea is that it's the onset of first use with substance use. If you can delay a child from using any substances till age 21, their likelihood of having substance use disorder drops off tremendously. So, our prevention efforts will always be with the youth, but on the recovery side, it's really going to be any age. You know, there's definitely a younger population more recently with substance use disorder, so the 18 to 24-year-olds, but we will serve any.
And both the services would be free to anyone that wants to, to be?
Yes, and that's our hope.
Every cent.
So, our hope is that by braiding the funding, by tapping into existing resources, there wouldn't be a cost. You know, that's always the hope, and that's the plan. That also helps with sustainability, so.
Do you have a place where you would house this?
Excuse me?
Do you have a location where you would house this?
That's where we're going to need some help from the Hears and the mayor and council to help us identify space. We don't currently have one, but our goal is somewhere within the city of Long Branch, maybe, you know, in a high visible walking area. But once we secure the Monmouth Medical Foundation to funding, which is what we hope to pay the lease and the rent, once we have that security and we know what our budget is, then that's when we'll start the process of identifying the space. Again, looking for advice from Hears and from various members of the community to help us figure out where's the best place, what's going to be most utilized, all those pieces. We don't want to really dictate where that's.
So, Michael, you know, we're all kind of learned here as you go. So, I mean, in a, in a simple scenario, so you have someone who, let's say, comes to the emergency room, who either overdoses or comes to one of your facilities there at the hospital voluntarily, right? So, they come in, they want help. You have, what do you do for them first? And then, I guess my question is, so then, when they get referred to this new place, if we were to get the grant, what is different about it than in the usual route, you know?
That's, so, that's perfect. So, basically, anyone comes into our hospital, substance use disorder, it does not have to be an overdose. So, they come in, in some way, they're identified as suffering from the disease of addiction. We have a peer recovery specialist that has a conversation as we say we open the window to recovery. Someone with substance use disorder, their window to recovery opens and closes 100 times a day. Our recovery specialist gets them to the point to say, yeah, you know what? I think I have a problem, and I want to do something about it. Once that happens, we have a patient navigator who is a clinical person, who does a screening or assessment on that individual to figure out what they need. You know, there's no one-size-fits-all to recovery. Everyone has a different pathway. Maybe it's a faith-based fellowship, maybe it's AA, NA, maybe it's medication-assisted treatment, maybe it's they need to go to detox, maybe they could do an outpatient. Whatever that is, we clinically screen them to figure out what's best. From the hospital, we do, some people call it a warm handoff, we like to say it's a hot handoff, because we literally take the person from the emergency room or the inpatient floor directly to a substance use treatment. room or the inpatient floor directly to a substance use treatment provider, whoever provides the level of care that that is most appropriate for that individual. Maybe it's New Hope. Maybe it's Prefer. Maybe it's, you know, somewhere out of the county. We never send anyone out of state, so it's always in-state. And there's a lot of variables, not only clinically, but what they're most appropriate to. They have insurance, all those pieces. Once they go to that program and engage with that program, maybe complete that program, let's say it's residential, once they've entered into recovery and completed or have started and engaged in their treatment journey, then they will be referred to the recovery center. So this will be an individual who is actively participating in their recovery, whether it be through a treatment provider or whatever is most appropriate. The idea is, is that alongside of whatever that care is, they need that recovery support. They need that individual to stay with them. Let's say it's an IOP program three days a week. That individual is going to help ensure that they attend that program three days a week. Part of that is a relationship. It's building that engagement. So the idea is that once they engage with treatment, which most of our patients do, we actually have almost a 75% success rate in connecting individuals to treatment. 100% of the people who've asked for help, we're able to get them help. The next task is to help them maintain that. So we get them connected and we help them maintain. So the idea for the recovery center is, is that it's a way for them to engage with the peer recovery specialist, build that relationship. The other thing too is a real high rate of relapse is when some of the other social determinants of their health go awry. You know, if they come out, finish treatment, and they don't have a job and they have economic struggles, that could be a pre-relapse in the care. They don't have a place to live. So we're also helping them along that way, along that journey. It's a model that is used across the state. Generally, the intensive support lasts about a year. So we would hope that someone would stay engaged with the program for about a year. But it tapers. You know, as they start building their support system again, they reengage with their family, they may need less intense support along the way. But also, there's people who, you know, addiction is a chronic disease. It relapses a part of that process. So our hope also is someone who may have been successful for a long period of time, if they start to struggle again, maybe they come to us before they use again. Or if they do, we can catch it early before it, you know, just continues to spiral out of control.
Is the larger grant or any of the grants either dependent on each other? Or, for example, the larger grant where you need a space, do you need to identify and have the funding, like you said, from the foundation for the space in order to get the grant? Or, you know what I mean? Is anything connected or...
So we're writing each application individually because as a funder, it's not good to submit an application like, "If I don't get this, I can't do this." So in our applications, we wrote them independently. So yes, we can provide each service individually based on the applications that we wrote. Definitely not ideal, definitely not as comprehensive as all the funding together. But yes, we can, if we just got the case management grant, for example, we could provide just that resource. We have our, again, because that's a county-based grant, so we have our office in Eaton Town, right on Route 35. So we could provide the case management out of that office. You know, there's multiple scenarios, but yes, we could do it individually, but our goal would be for all that. The one caveat to all of this is that we have been part, we've been fortunate enough to be part of a process with the state, with Medicaid and the Department of Mental Health and Addiction Services. Recovery supports will be a reimbursable service through Medicaid starting July 1st. So if we don't get the grant, we will have the opportunity to utilize some of the Medicaid benefits to help fund some of the services that we'll do. They're also looking towards October to also reimburse for the case management. So, you know, this, the county grant might just be something that gets the flywheel starting and kicks something off, that it could be, again, like an outpatient service for any physical therapy, diabetes management, whatever it is, so...
So are you here because you need the support or endorsement of the city or something? Or this is just informational or what?
It really, really is informational in terms of, you know, if, if we do, if all this does happen and we're looking for a recovery center, when all is said and done, we wanted everybody to be aware of what was going on. So it's informational right now.
In a perfect world, if they get the grants, because I'm sure they're very skilled grant writers, if we get the grants, we still need a venue.
Right.
So it's informational, but they still need a place to house this program.
So what are you saying? That needs to be figured out at this point?
Well, no, I'm not telling them their business. I'm just saying, again, if the money comes through, we're going to house it.
How big of a facility would it be?
Our hope was around 3,000 square feet. Again, we've, we looked at space that was much larger and much smaller. Recovery centers naturally vary greatly in their size, but we would love a 3,000 or so square foot space. You know, the, I think the other part is not only informational, we are, we're really trying to embrace, so Communities That Care is an international model of working with communities, and it's not a program, it's a process. So part of that process is getting the buy-in from the key stakeholders, so this committee specifically. And it's really just being part of the process of informing what's going on and, you know, being part of that process and coming when. Here's a specific, you know, in two months, we may get the grant. You're absolutely right. You may come and say, "We found a space, X, Y, and Z. We just want to make sure that, you know, the mayor and council supports the, the choice of this location." Or you may say, "Yeah, that's a fine space, but no one will go there because there's no parking." Or there's no foot traffic. Or there's this. You know, we don't want to assume any of that, so we really want to help build the success of that program by engaging input from the entire community.
And, and at that point too, you know, we'll have an idea of how much money, you know, we have to put towards rent and everything else too. So it is a building process. I hear what you're saying, but it is a little bit of a step-by-step to see, see how this plays out. I, I want to pick up on what the mayor said in terms of, really, this actually speaks with your question too. I mean, we're, we're learning by, by doing here. When, when we started the HERS Task Force, it was knowing that there's a huge need and, and what can we do? Andrew is on the steering committee for HERS. So this is a very integrated effort. This is not just, you know, the Communities That Care kind of doing stuff. This is, this is integrated into a bigger master plan. And Rose, one of the things that you had said before is, one of the things that HERS, the first thing that we're doing is looking at what are all of the services that are out there now? And there are some gaps, but there's also duplication. So, you know, what does that whole continuum look like? So we know what services need to be reinforced? What services can we say, you know, might, might some of these service providers be able to collaborate and maybe have some efficiencies there? So that's, that's one of the first things that HERS is doing. And Communities That Care with the whole prevention piece is a huge first piece for us, which we're, you know, really excited about what, what they'll be able to bring to the community.
I worked for an alcohol drug rehab center about 2010, 11, 12, and we also had a recovery center there. I saw a lot of miracles, so, you know, I think it's a great concept and, you know, hopefully we can help, you know, bring our services here in Long Branch.
Yeah, thank you. It really is amazing when you see an individual. We just had a, one of the first individuals we saw actually at Monmouth Medical Center almost two and a half years ago when we started the ORP program. We were at a statewide addiction conference and he walked up to us. Similar, he's in the field now. He's, you know, wife, kid, job, fully recovered, fully participating in the community, supporting others in their recovery. So it's, you know, prevention's not always tangible. You don't always see what you prevent, so you hope. Recovery often gets very tangible. You see some real miracles happening. So we're very excited. You know, it's, we're very committed. It's, we're already, the Communities That Care is, you know, almost $300,000 worth of funding. This would be almost another, just under $400,000 in funding annually. So to be able to be a partner in the community and bring, you know, just under $1 million worth of funding to address substance use in Long Branch, we're really excited.
And there's a 10-year grant due, so this is going to be long-term.
Yeah, we don't want to come in with a program, tell everyone what we want to do, and then be gone in two years. We want to be, you know, part of the community for a long time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you so much.
Thanks for having us.
Thank you.
For coming in there.
Jack, did you have a question?
I just, this is a very, very important effort that we're talking about here, to our whole society, especially to the young that's sucked into this stuff. And so, treatment isn't, isn't a needle in the arm to catch a over it like a flu or something. It's something that's as much psychological as anything else, as much dependent, that it doesn't cure overnight, and it doesn't stay cured forever unless you work on it. I would, I know what's going on in the library. I'm very familiar with other activities in the areas, including Adidas. And I'd like to have some time with you guys, maybe, maybe not tonight, some other time, to talk about what I know and maybe share that with you. A lot of what we're talking about here, I believe, is voluntary on the part of the person who has the disease. They've got to agree that they have it, they've got to be willing to do something about it, and they've got to have reason. Oftentimes, one of the parts that's missing is the support from the family. It's misdirected, it's a stigma thing even within the family. And, you know, how, how long is it going to take Jack to get straightened out? I mean, God sakes, we treat him every day, you know, for, for my little bed. So it's a very sensitive, very tech, technical and yet social thing. A lot of psychology, psychiatric help is needed, not necessarily getting on the table and telling your, you know, but things of people living together. AA, for example, people caring for each other enough to help each other. That's a whole environment, a whole social impact that you're talking about here, changing people to care, where you can't even get people to don't blow the horn every time the traffic light changes. Society has forgotten each other. It's a tough, tough battle. There's a lot of uphill, but I've seen it work. I have personally seen it work, and I, I would support what they're doing.
Janet, Jack, let me jump in for a second because I, I made a mistake in, in forgetting the, our guideline, which is that there's no public comment during the workshop. I, I saw your hand go up and I just automatically sent you to have a question. I shouldn't have done that. We appreciate your comments because I know they're very heartfelt, but let, let me take responsibility for having made a mistake with our procedure. So I'm sorry for that. I apologize. Because this part of the meeting is not supposed to be open to public comment, although I, I want to acknowledge, because I know that your comments are very heartfelt.
And I wanted to establish a relationship between these two people and myself so that I can help be a part of it.
Good. Good. Thank you, Jack.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. I get a little passionate.
Yeah, I know, I do too. That's why I...
The next...
Thank you.
Mr. Carman.
Thank you so much. The next is the discussion ordinance of tax exemption for disabled veterans. Mr. Martin?
Thank you. What we're trying to do with this ordinance is kind of make a written policy for something we've actually been doing for years.
We are, I know we're doing it.
Yes, we are. We don't have any formal written policy, and this is kind of just codifying that to protect us in case anybody asks, "Why are you doing it the way you're doing it?" So what this is, is we are going to implement the tax exempt status from the day the assessor grants that status. And a lot of people try to extend that backwards to try and get refunds for taxes from the day of their disability, from the day they were considered disabled. And we've been practicing this for years.
How long?
Probably 30 years, the way it is now currently, and this is just kind of codifying the practice, just to insulate ourselves from any future potential.
So for those who don't know, could you just explain?
For those who don't know, if you have a 100% veteran disability status, you are 100% exempt from property taxes. So once you become, classified as 100% disabled by the military, you apply to the assessor with the proper credentials, and they negate your taxes going forward. But every time you move, or if you go to a different town, or if you enter a different town, you have to reapply. So that's how it occurs.
So Mike, just out of curiosity, let's say you have a husband and wife, and the father and the husband is a 100% disabled. But if he passes on of the house, we're in both names or something, does that continue? How does that...
It would not continue.
Yes.
It does continue?
A surviving spouse of a 100% disabled veteran does give the exemption as long as they're, I believe, they do not remarry and they, you know, they're in that house in that town. If they move somewhere else, then they would have to reapply with that town as a surviving spouse, except for veteran.
Sorry.
Is there a reason why it's being brought up now and was never put into place before?
It's been challenged in some other towns?
We have been advised that there have been towns where it has been challenged. There's been some changes to what the VA considers 100% disability recently. So people have, you know, they're disabled now and they've now applied for these new rules, and maybe they were disabled 20 years ago. And, you know, you have someone coming in and now they want 20-year refund of their property taxes. And if the town doesn't have something in writing, then, you know, you don't have something to stand on as, you know, for your policy, and they can challenge it. So hopefully this will, it's just, we're just memorializing what we've been doing and to be fair to everyone, you should go and go in.
How many do we have, Carla? Do you know?
I don't know exactly how many we have. I know there's been an increase in the past couple of years in the number of exempt veterans because of these new laws that the VA has adopted. It used to be that you had to be disabled in combat, in the place of combat outside of the US, and they've changed that to, you know, kind of be disabled even in the US if you're not physically in combat. So there's been an increase in the number of exemptions. Thank you. Thank you. So, any more questions on that? Thank you. The next one is a mission statement. And as I told you two weeks ago, you can go back and work on it if you're interested in entertaining the idea. It's kind of something I'd like to put on our website, put it on our agendas, and I'll pass this out. But basically, what I did, I went on the internet and I looked up a lot of different municipalities and things like that. And I came up with something that says that the mayor and council of the city of Long Branch are committed to cultivate an environment of mutual trust, respect, and the values of true diversity which exist in our community. We are dedicated in enhancing the quality of life for all those who live here. They make it longer to most desirable place in which to live, learn, gain, and prosper. And, I mean, this is something that I'm open to change or revise or whatever you want to do, and just wanted to pass it by and get your comments on it. Wanted to have a chance to look at and...
Nice talk.
Thank you.
Very nice, yeah.
I changed the first couple of words here.
That's fine, you can change it, yeah. And then I, you know, while we're, while you're looking at that, I went online and looked at the city of Beverly Hills, and I was looking at their agenda, and they have like a part of their agenda which I thought was really nice since we're talking about this. It's communications from their commissions, and they have, where they talk about things...
like, a part of their agenda, which I thought was really nice since we're talking about this, it's communications from their commissions, and they have, where they talk about things that, things that were good deeds that were done during the month, and how you recognize either organizations that did a good deed, or, and not necessarily bring them to the meeting, but just saying, hey, look at, you know, Johnny helped, you know, this old, older woman, you know, who fell, and, you know, just kind of recognizing things that happened in our community that we know about, from, you know, or whatever, but I just thought it was like a really, really nice idea, and, you know, it was, it was just something we might want to think about doing, you know, because it's all about civility, and, you know, being respectful, kind, and, so, I just thought that you want to take a look at this, you can. But, anyway, if you want to make any changes to this, we can, and if not, I guess we're going to have to adopt it next, our next meeting, I'm bringing it up to adopt them.
I'd change it.
Thanks. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you for doing it.
You're welcome.
I think you did a real nice job on, on this. And, I know several organizations, I mean, we may want to do this, we may not, but actually when they start their meetings, they just, they open up their meetings by just reading what their mission statement is, just as a reminder. And this is short enough, and kind of to the point, covers everything?
Yeah, I don't want to make it too long, because then we lose the actual effect, but, yeah, anyway, so, like I said, we have until next meeting, if you want to revise it or whatever, just let me know, and then I'll send it off to Catherine. Thank you.
And that, the idea too, of what you're saying in terms of recognizing, it worked at places where you get into like a regular, it could be a Monday morning kind of shout-out kind of thing that, you know, the, the head of the organization will do, and it'll just be mentioning people who have done, you know, good things.
Yeah.
And, it has started where people really, you know, you look forward to seeing what these weekly announcements are, and, you know, if you're included, it's kind of nice, and, you know, you, you can put in suggestions for other people, and, so, if, if, I've, I've seen it really create a very nice atmosphere, so, if everybody was supportive of that.
We have so many positives gone on in the city by so many people, and I think it's important that, you know, we just talk about it, because it's what it's all about, being positive, and helping one another, and doing good things, so. Okay, thanks. Anything else? Okay, so the next item is review of the regular meeting agenda. Does anyone have any questions?
Hi.
Okay.
Resolution, R96, late 2. LBG, TQ, in the prior month. Can you go to the next secretary's?
Yeah. Who would like to go on?
Oh, hold on, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you say that. I just had a comment on, when we were first talking about the affordable housing ordinance, we had mentioned the idea of, you know, really doing some PR about that, that's a pretty significant thing that is being passed, and I just want to bring that up again, that if you want to revisit that, and the mayor and I, you feel about that, but when, I, we thought that that was a pretty significant step, and I think it's an opportunity to have some very positive publicity about it. Doesn't, I wouldn't want to lose that moment. That's one thing. Yeah, and just my other comment, and I don't suggest we do it at this meeting, but just to consider, you know, with our recognizing of the different months, and, you know, that, you know, they go, they're part of the consent agenda, and they go by, and they're pretty much unnoticed, and, and when you read them, they, you know, we, we say some pretty significant things in there, in terms of whatever, whatever we're celebrating that, that month. If we were to consider, just to read those, you know, what is that week all about? I'm not suggesting that we do it at, at this meeting, but to bring some attention to, what are these weeks all about? I think it just adds a little bit more value to it.
Maybe we can put like a little summary on the agenda, below the actual resolution?
You know, at one time...
Just a few sentences?
Yeah.
So, we can do something like that.
Yeah, at one point early on, someone actually made that suggestion, that, you know, people come to meetings, and we have resolutions, and we have the numbers and everything, but, you know, people don't know all that's going in there, a little summary would make it more meaningful. I was thinking particularly about the weeks that we kind of identified, but how, so my comment was about the weeks, just to make it a little bit more meaningful.
Okay. George, the, for Beth Avenue and Morris Avenue, the drainage improvements?
Yes.
Are they going to be like monitored closely, so we don't have what happened the last time?
Well, they're just about done.
They are done?
They're not totally, but we're closing it, yes.
Okay, there were no problems then with anyone?
Well, we had some calls from some residents, some that were concerned about shrubs that were taken out, that it was excessive, but I can tell you, the calls that I got, Jerry Frieda from Avakian, when I passed them on to him, there was no second call back, it was resolved. We had some concerns, I still have some conversations with Mike Irene about his professional building on Morris Avenue, we're fixing up some issues there, but they're going pretty smoothly. And, this was a difficult project, because it went through so many different properties, and because of the age of the infrastructure, there are many properties that we don't have really solid easements or right-of-way on, so they do present some problems, but they they won't have managed quite well, so, it's just not a wrap-up.
So the residents are satisfied with what remediation was done after the job was?
Well, what, what's been done is basically underground, but there were also some, I guess, some modifications to the original plan, to accommodate some of the individual conditions that existed on people's properties, where they had, as the contractors went through, they would find some areas where water was puddling, they would put in another inlet, so that fed into the system. We had some challenges with sheds that were in locations that they weren't approved or pre-approved, and, it really worked well, keeping the hallways intact. We had one location where a garage was literally crumbling, because they had no foundation, there were no footings, but it all worked out quite well, so, it was, for a challenging project, it was up quite well.
Thank you. Anyone else? So then I need a motion to close, and go on to executive session. Go on to executive session. So move.
Sure.
Your favor?
Aye.
Aye.